Good evening. This is the Guilford, Connecticut Board of Education. It is Monday, March 14th. Welcome. I want to start off and have you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those are there. Those are there for you guys.
Please have a seat. Welcome. I am going to ask my colleagues to add an item to the board agenda, which is simply the addition under three. I'm going to suggest making it 3.3 of the February 7th, 2022 special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to add that to the agenda?
Some would.
Second. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. So first item under minutes is the February 14th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Some would.
Second.
Wonderful. Any corrections? I have just a couple minor ones. On page seven, the second paragraph should say last day of school to June 16th, 2023, On page eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven kind of paragraphs down, Dr. Freeman had suggested that the 1.0 special education position for Lakes-Baldwin could be, I think we want to scratch left in and put moved into the ESER funds.
Better, yes. That was never in the original.
Right. And then the last correction on page 11, the last line of the first paragraph, Dr. Balistraci noted that the board plans to hold a dedicated workshop to discuss the topic of implementation.
But are you, are you in the next meeting? Which page?
No, page 11.
Page 11 of this meeting?
You're going to miss.
Yeah.
You're missing a page?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Never mind. There it is.
Does that make sense?
Now it does.
Excellent. Okay. There we go. Are there any other corrections to these minutes?
Just on page 10, under 10.5, the second paragraph, it says Mrs. Peck noticed that they also talked about the concept of an IB type of program at the middle school level where students work on projects with a focus on a global air. So what do we think that was intended to be?
It's not air.
No. Focus on a global.
I would say perspective.
Okay. That silly little thing. That was it.
Oh, that was too much.
And then just under 10.3, Dr. Siler's name was just spelled incorrectly.
Oh, S.I. Yeah.
S.I.L.E.R.
Excellent. I didn't catch that. That's it. All right.
Page three.
Yep.
In relation to the last day of school for first full paragraph, it says, and move the last day of school to June 18, 2023. I think in line with your earlier correction, it should be June 16, 2023.
Yes. Thank you. Yes. Anything else? So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving these minutes as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone in opposition? Subventions? Okay. Thank you. February 28th, 2022 workshop meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Some would.
Second. Thank you. I just had two very brief corrections. The first is just my name at the very top, V.A.L.E.S.T.R.A.C.C.I. I never blame anyone for misspelling that, ever. And then under number four, just noting that Attorney Ken Weinstock's last name is W.E.I.N.S.T.O.C.K.
As long as we're making name spelling changes. Item number two, motion by John Delaventura. I've never seen it spelt like that, but we'll, we'll correct that.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. You notice that I noticed mine, but not yours.
That's quite all right.
Sorry. Oh, dear. All right. Excellent. Any other questions about these minutes? All right. I have a motion and a second to, to approve. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? No. Subventions? Okay. And then again, adding the added agenda item of the February 7th, 2022 special meeting. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Some would. Second.
All right. Any corrections or questions? I did not have any. Not?
It was in the operations packet if anybody's looking for it.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes. Thank you. Yes. So let's, what happened was there was a little mix up. They were originally added to the agenda for the operations meeting that happened just before this. We noted in that meeting that it was more appropriate for this meeting since it was an entire Board of Ed meeting. It was, it was for the, the Board of Ed as, as a group. So we have a motion and a second. I haven't heard any corrections. I know I didn't have any. All right. All in favor of approving these minutes?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions?
I'm going to abstain ahead of them.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Public forum for topics on the board agenda. If there's anyone in the public who would like to address the board on topics on the board agenda, you're invited to come up. Let me ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody? All right. Seeing none, I am going to go to the next item on the agenda, which is to review and approve the expenditures for the month of February 2022. I was the reviewer of the month. The expenditures for the month of February were $4,984,940.93. Expenditures and incumbences through the end of February were 62.62% of the budget, as compared to 63.29% of the budget in 2020-21, and 61.55% of the budget in 2019 to '20. We have this year been doing a two-year look back because last year was so impacted by the pandemic and the numbers are certainly in some budget item lines are very unusual. On the revenue side for February, we did receive the excess, first, sorry, the first payment of the excess cost grant. So revenue was $758,711, which included $745,335 for the excess cost grant. This represents about 82% of the excess cost. We expect the second payment every year in May. It seldom comes in at the proportion that the first payment came in, so we expect it to be less than 82%, but certainly, it was good news until you, again, recognized that it would be wonderful. It was 100%, but it was higher than I think we expected. In general, we look at a number of categories when we're reviewing, reviewing the financials. And so we're noting that salaries, purchased services, supplies and materials, capital and transportation are slightly higher at this point in the year than they were in prior years, but most of those are around, well, there are a couple of different reasons. Some of them are about timing of payments. Supplies, interestingly, bottled gas is higher than the prior year due to reduced gas usage by dining services last year. So again, we have some differences in pandemic spending that really impacted things last year. And we do have things like the equipment instruction expenses under capital. We're simply waiting for the capital lease to reimburse. We did discuss the finances in greater detail, as well as the warrants, in the prior operations meeting just before this meeting, but I welcome any additional comments or questions from my colleagues at the moment if you have them. None. All right. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the finances for February 2022. A second, please? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Abstention? No. All right. Number six, communications. Are there any communications received that any of my colleagues want to report?
I've just received a few communications, just some questions or clarification on the mastery level. Just, I have a junior, so I think just some parents reaching out.
And that's a mastery level graduation requirement?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Any others?
It's more about a communication that I actually sent.
Okay.
There was a change at the high school in the last, I think it was the end of last week and beginning of this week in regards to drop off in the bus, the parents' drop off line. There has been some confusion. Instead of going all the way around the school to exit, I, some of the parents, I guess, have been using the turnaround to come back out while people are coming in and students are trying to park. And George Goulet, who normally is more at the exit, has been moved to the entrance to help make that flow better. And he's just amazing. He is just so kind and sweet. I wave to him every morning, but I know he got treated pretty poorly the first day that he was out there. And it was just unfortunate. So I sent a communication to the administration at the high school, thanking them for, for having him out there to make things go smoothly for mostly the children and the safety of the students trying to get into the school, but also for supporting George. And I think we should all support him and his efforts to help make that smoother.
Very appreciated note. George is one of our unsung heroes out there every morning while students and parents are arriving with a smile regardless of the weather or the temperature. He is wonderful and we very much appreciated that recognition. Thank you.
That's terrific. Other communications? All right. Thank you. We are now up to student representatives.
Hi, Jerry.
Hi, Ruby. Hi. Good to hear what you have to share.
Sure. So Adams Middle School, as the unfortunate war between Russia and Ukraine is going on, students have began collecting supplies and items for families in Ukraine. The entire school is working to collect as much as possible for the families in need. The badminton tournament was very successful and well-intended. Mr. Vedrani and Alex Uzo has won and Adams wants to congratulate them both. Adams eighth graders had, and their parents participated in a virtual open house to begin the transition process from eighth grade to high school. And the process will begin for Baldwin sixth graders headed to Adams for this fall. Three seventh grade students who participated in the writer's block ran by Mr. Day, were recently recognized by the Connecticut Writing Project. Everett Barden won honorable mention for his artwork. Excuse me if I mispronounce this person's name, but Jaleen Reynus won a silver award for her moving poem, "The Day," "That Day," sorry. And Sienna Brackney won a gold award for her courageous short story named, "Run, Don't Look Back." Also, a congratulations to the members of the wrestling team as they participated in their accomplishments at the Connecticut Middle School Championships. At A.W. Cox, this coming month, the students are focusing on inclusivity. At A.W. Cox, and they're combining lessons with quotes and conversations with their students. And also, there will be a parent teacher conference on March 31st and April 1st to discuss students' social, emotional, and academic progress.
Thank you.
So at Melissa Jones School, on March 2nd, the entire community enjoyed an author visit from Angela Dieter Lizzie, the author of Have You Seen This Book?, to celebrate Read Across America Day. Grade one students also had a virtual field trip to the Mystic Seaport Museum's Planetarium as part of a literacy unit titled, What's Up in the Sky: A Study of the Sun, Moon, and Stars. And Melissa Jones will celebrate its next spirit day on Thursday by wearing green. At Baldwin Middle School, every morning Baldwin students participate in a class dedicated to enrichment activities. And recently, students in Ms. Lombard's class learned about the features of mini golf holes. In small groups, they were asked to create a themed mini golf hole using their knowledge and skills in math, science, drawing, and sculpture to design a functional work of art. They created a plan for their hole and also built a scaled model of it. Each hole included at least two of the following: changes in terrain, multi-levels, moving parts, and obstacles. After this was complete, they played mini golf and tried out each other's mini golf holes. And they also invited members of the BMS community to play on the six holes created. Baldwin also celebrated Read Across America Day on Wednesday, March 2nd, and Guilford High School students read Patricia Palaco books and facilitated discussions with Baldwin students throughout the day via Zoom. And this was a great opportunity for both high school seniors and Baldwin students. It was also an example of how we can leverage technology to facilitate learning opportunities. And many thanks to Jane Natoli, Molly McKenna, Samim Muthrop, and the Baldwin teachers. It was a great collaboration. And finally, at Guilford High School, the fencing team just competed in the CT States Tournament yesterday. There were a lot of teams there and everyone worked extremely hard. We came first in women's foil, third in women's epe, and second in women's saber, as well as fifth in men's foil, second in men's epe, and first in men's saber. And both the women's team and men's team came in first overall. And lastly, the boys indoor track team also competed this past weekend with the 4x800 team placing 11th in the Rising Stars event at the New Balance Nationals. Congrats to both teams.
Excellent. And congratulations to you being on the Guilford High School saber team.
Thank you.
Terrific. I love that collaboration that you just spoke about, the, the.
High school seniors reading to Baldwin.
That's great. That's terrific. Other questions or comments for our?
The trip to the Mystic Aquarium, was that in person or was that virtual?
No, that was virtual.
That was virtual.
Is there any hope that we're going to do in-person field trips anytime soon?
It is under consideration, yes. We want to keep an eye on the numbers now that the masks have become optional. I'll speak to that a little bit, but yes, we're looking at relaxing some of the other restrictions as well. Don't want to let everything go all at the same time, however.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
And I, we're about to move in to the superintendent's report as usual. You're welcome to say you don't have to, but those bags, I believe, are part of.
I was going to ask if you would just stay for the first time in my report.
There we go. All right. Dr. Freeman, your report.
Thank you very much. So the first item on my report is to recognize the month. The month of March is recognized as Annual Board of Education Member Appreciation Month. And so tonight, we did want to take just a moment to say thank you to all of you, including our student reps, for all of the time and energy that you volunteer to this community to lead and to report on the work of the school district. So there's a very modest token of our appreciation for each of you here at the meeting tonight. And again, just want to say to all of you in front of the community, thank you for all that you do in leading the affairs of this school system, to all of you. It's really very much appreciated. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you guys certainly don't need to hang around for the rest of it, although you're very, very welcome.
If you would like. Maybe grab Sean's bag. Can one of you get Sean his bag? Okay. That'd be terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thank you, guys.
I also did want to spend a little bit of time this evening following up on the status of COVID and COVID mitigation strategies in the schools district. I think everybody is very aware that on February 28th, we dropped mandatory masking in all of our schools. In general, that has been going very, very well. Since that date, however, we have been tracking an uptick in positive cases specifically at Adams Middle School. We met with the medical COVID team this morning, and just a few hours ago, Mr. Regan and I sent a letter to the parents of students at Adams. Specifically at Adams, for the last two weeks, we had been tracking three students in each of the past two weeks who'd been identified as positive. Last week, we identified 14 students, or we became aware of 14 students at Adams who have tested positive. Now, the numbers are interesting. All of those 14 were identified Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. We had zeros Thursday, Friday, and Saturday of last week. There are multiple variables that go into this. We don't know exactly what the variables are. Adams is one of our two populations with the highest vaccination rate, Adams and the high school. We don't know what all those variables are. However, we did send a communication, again, home to the parents of the Adams students, bringing that outlier to their attention and asking the parents of students at Adams to consider five responses to that information, to that knowledge. First is we want to remind everybody, and specifically the Adams parents, of the tracker on our website. The first item on our website is a COVID positivity tracker. It is updated daily and it is updated by location. So every parent can see the number of positive cases in your specific school location. We specifically are asking Adams parents to pay attention to that tracker for the next several days. We want to remind all parents in the community, but again, specifically Adams parents, if your students are showing any cold and flu symptoms, to please keep them home from school that morning. And if they're showing symptoms, we would ask that you please test them for COVID. At-home tests are available in the school nurse's office in every school. If your child begins to exhibit symptoms during the school day and we send them home, we send them home with a test. You can also request an at-home test if you keep your child home on your own. Additionally, we are encouraging all parents in the district, but again, specifically at Adams, to consider our invitation into the Connecticut COVID Detect Project. Connecticut COVID Detect Project is a no-cost opportunity that is provided to us by the state of Connecticut to do regular weekly surveillance PCR testing for COVID. We need to eat, we need to reach a threshold of 20 students per building before the state will provide the service to us. We have the numbers in this week. In five of our seven buildings, we have reached that threshold of 20. At Adams, we have not. So at Adams, we will not be able to offer the weekly testing to any students unless we have more individual families, parents, students who take advantage of it. So I want to encourage all of the parents at Adams specifically to consider enrolling your child in this weekly surveillance testing. Beyond that, I want to encourage every Adams parent, as you look at the daily tracker, to consider encouraging your child, to think about whether or not you want to encourage your child to choose to wear a mask at Adams. Today, in this moment, as we sit here, we know that Adams has our highest prevalence rate of COVID active in that environment. While masks are no longer mandated across the district, every individual has the right and the choice to wear a mask if they so choose. So as we encourage parents to watch that tracker, we want parents to think really carefully about whether or not you want to encourage your child to wear that mask. And then finally, as I do every time we talk about this, I want to encourage parents to speak with their pediatricians and to consider having your children vaccinated. We know that the vaccine is the best protection that we have across the population. I want to encourage every parent to have that conversation with your individual medical provider and to consider making that or adding that mitigation strategy to, to your, to your quiver. Along the same lines, and I mentioned it regarding Adams, but I do want to mention it again across all seven of our buildings, last week, we sent home an invitation for parents to enroll their children into the COVID Detect Program. As of this morning's returns, we will have the ability to offer that program in five of our seven buildings because we reached or exceeded the 20-student minimum. Currently, at Jones and at Adams, we have not reached that 20-student minimum. So while families in both communities have expressed interest, we will not be able to provide that service to students who enrolled in those two schools. I want to encourage every family to consider enrolling in this surveillance program. It will give us more information. Information is power, and it will help us to continue our layered mitigation strategies. And just to respond to some feedback that I received when the invitation went out. When the invitation went out to enroll in COVID Detect, a number of parents or community members reached out to me and wanted to know if it was safe enough to drop the masking mandate, then why were we offering this testing option instead? As if one was reliant upon the other. I want to remind everybody, there are multiple mitigation strategies, and we can apply or pick and choose among those mitigation strategies. So while we will no longer mandate masks in the schools, every student and every parent has the ability to make a choice to have your child continue to mask in schools. And this testing option, while it is an invitation only, it is not a requirement, it's one more tool particularly for the parents who feel like it's too early to release the masking requirement. And so it was one more opportunity that we could provide. It was one more choice that we could offer. And so again, I want to encourage parents to go look at the communication we sent out. You can find information about COVID Detect on our website or on the state of Connecticut website, and consider enrolling your child. You simply need to reach out to your school nurse, get a copy of the consent form, and we should have this testing up and running, I think, by, it could be as early as next week, it could be the week after, and we will be conducting that testing. Any impact of that testing will be shared on the daily tracker. So if that testing results in positive cases, those numbers will appear on the daily tracker that is connected to our website. Again, the only other comment that I will make, it really is nice to be in the schools and to see students and teachers smiling at each other. So while I know that it continues to be concerning to some, and while we will continue to watch it very closely, the flip side is that there are smiles in the buildings. You can see the smiles in the buildings, and it is nice to move through those buildings. And many of our students and adults are making really flexible decisions, choosing not to mask when they're spaced and putting on the mask if they feel like they're in close quarters. We're going to continue to meet with our medical team. We'll continue to monitor and we'll continue to report to you, the board, and to the community.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you.
The only other item I have is a very brief budget update. I know we've spent a lot of time talking about the budget, but I do want to make sure that the community is brought up, up to date. Last Thursday evening, the Board of Finance approved finalized operational and capital budgets for the schools and the towns. There was an additional meeting scheduled for tonight. Many years on this evening, we're split. Some of us are across town meeting with the Board of Finance, and half of you are here conducting our business, but because the Board of Finance finalized those budgets Thursday night, we all get to be here together. It is a significant budget increase on the educational side this year, primarily driven by an unavoidable, non-discretionary impact to our, our medical spending, to the medical benefits that we offer to our employees. The medical benefits aren't increasing. We're not giving more coverage to our employees. The cost of what we currently provide has increased significantly this year, and we need to meet that cost. There are some modest investments into the instructional side of the budget, and those investments are very specifically targeted at teacher positions servicing students at the classroom level. All of that being said, I want to remind the community that the next step, there will be an annual town meeting held on April 5th. The annual town meeting will vote to move these finalized budgets to referendum, and the referendum to vote on these budgets is tentatively scheduled for April 12th. That won't be finalized until the town meeting on the 5th, but we anticipate that these completed budgets in all, in their full detail will be presented at the town meeting and then moved forward to the town for referendum vote on April 12th. There's information on the school side of that budget that is available on our school website. It will remain on our website until the town meeting on the 5th, at which time we will be required to remove it from our school website, but information is still available from the town. And Board of Ed meetings, now that they are archived on YouTube, will continue to have that information available as well for at GCTV. You can view the town, the board meetings if you want to see questions, answers, information on the budget. And again, I just want to finish that item by thanking Mr. Bowden, Mrs. Trudeau, and all of the central office and principal team for putting this budget together this year, and all of you for the countless hours that you put into finalizing and approving that budget. It's been a long process, but we're happy to be at the, at the end of our part of that.
Yeah. Thank you. And one of the things that's going to be very important for our community to understand is that while the Board of Finance approved the Board of Ed budget and the town budgets, both which came in a little bit above 5%, because of the both which came in a little bit above 5%, because of the increase in the grand list, the mill rate and the tax increase is going to be less than 2%. And I encourage folks to go on to, I guess it would be YouTube, and find the Board of Finance meetings that occurred last week, because you can get some detail. The Chair of the Board, Mike Ailes, shared the specifics of what the numbers will translate to for community members, and I think that difference is going to be really important to understand because this increase in the grand list really is having a very positive impact at a time when the town and Board of Ed budgets were higher than usual, largely due to this medical benefits increase.
I think that's a really important point. I think there could easily be some confusion in the budgets going up 5% and thinking that means your taxes are going up 5%. And that's not accurate. The budgets are increasing 5%, but taxes are projected to go up, I believe, 1.9%.
Yeah, it's like 1.95, or I don't want to misquote, but you're right. It is under 2. And that's going to be really important for our community to understand.
Surprisingly, after the last several months, that concludes my report this evening.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments about that? All right. Thank you very much. All right, the board agenda. 9.1 is to act on a personnel item. I'd like to entertain a motion to ratify the resignation of the following teacher, Jeanette Wimmer, Guilford High School, special education teacher, 19 years of service in Guilford.
Turn them over.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Certainly, thank you very much, Jeanette Wimmer, for those 19 years. That's wonderful. 9.2 is to act on a graduation date. Dr. Freeman, it looks like you're proposing June 17th.
Yes, so historically, until recently, the Board of Ed would not be able to set a graduation date until April 1st or later, and their expectation was that the graduation date could not be scheduled until after 180 days of school. That requirement was changed last year, I believe legislatively. The Board does now have the ability to act prior to April 1st. And while all students continue to be welcomed and encouraged to attend the full 180 days of school, it is acceptable to graduate our seniors at a time prior. So our seniors, if this date is set for June 17th, will be graduated at 177 days, and they will be welcomed and kept busy when they come to school on days 178, 179, and 80. But I would recommend that we schedule the graduation for that Friday rather than pushing it to 180 and putting it at beyond a weekend on Wednesday evening, and we know it will complicate travel plans for family members who will be coming to Guilford to see their grandchildren, nieces, nephews graduate. So we would propose the 17th, which was the original last day of school.
And just so that everyone is aware, I assume exam week extends past June 17th?
Yes, that is correct.
I see Ms. Chaff nodding her head. So seniors who have, how does that work, right? Seniors who have exams?
So at graduation, students walk at graduation and receive a diploma blank in our process. So a student, and Ms. Chaff is coming up to help me with this.
Yeah, come on up, thanks.
But a student whose graduation is contingent upon completing or passing any one of those exams would receive the graduation blank, would have the option to walk through graduation, but would not receive the completed diploma should they fail to complete the exam or complete the exam satisfactorily on one of those days that fell even after the ceremony. The ceremony will happen on Friday, the 17th. The actual diplomas will not be delivered until students have met all expectations. Want to help me out with that?
I think the only thing to add to that is that seniors can also qualify for an exam exemption based on their performance in the last, if it's a year-long course, I believe it's the last half of the course, the second semester. If it's a semester-length course, it's the last quarter performance, and I think it's an A- or higher, then they are exempt from the exam and don't have to come in and take it. But otherwise, we would work something out like Dr. Freeman described to make sure that they fulfill all of their course requirements before they receive their diplomas.
I'm going to point out the psychological evaluation of how Julia and I answered that from different perspectives. Her answer was, for most students, this is going to be no impact. Most of them will have been waived. My response was, if this is going to make or break graduation for a student, they will still be expected to come in on that Tuesday, sit for the exam, complete it satisfactorily to receive the diploma, even though they will have participated in the ceremony, which may have exceeded that final requirement.
And because this is a fairly, right, the fact that we have not, we don't have to wait till April 1st, which was previously a requirement, I don't believe in my 10 years we've ever purposely scheduled graduation prior to the last day of school. So I'm interested in just why we're thinking of doing it this year.
Two reasons. One is concrete at this moment, and one is a projection. But the concrete at the moment is the impact that moving it this late in the year, particularly after April 1st, has had on families. So we have always received feedback from senior families about the impact of, we had travel plans in place for the 17th, it snowed, you took days, and now family are scrambling to move those dates. So a big portion of it is that convenience factor. The projection is that there is also continued discussion in Hartford about whether or not we're going to be required to make up those three days in June, or whether there could be legislation coming out of this session that allows school districts to forgive those three days for students this year only because of COVID and challenges that COVID has presented, so that those days may not be student days anyway. So it is in large part trying to anticipate what may happen in Hartford, but really about getting the decision made earlier, because we have the ability to make it earlier, and facilitating a celebration for those families. We honestly do not think that it is going to change who walks at graduation in a significant way.
Okay. And if the state takes away those three days, will finals week or exam just get moved back to the date?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If we end up reducing the school year from 180 to 177, then the high school's going to have to adjust their calendar so that finals week ends on day 177. They'll no longer be able to extend to 180.
I'm so sorry. Why, what three days are we talking about?
We have had three snow days so far this year.
It's snow days, okay. But my point is that not everyone in the state had the same three snow days. So Guilford had three snow days, correct? Or did everyone?
Correct. And the legislation is sort of tied up in those details right now. Is it going to, but there is pending legislation to, and I believe it's being called COVID relief, to just allow schools to essentially end on what was their originally published last day of school.
Okay.
Making up, and sometimes the number is up to three, sometimes the number is up to five, and those days would probably most likely become teacher workdays, professional learning days, but they would not necessarily be held as student days. That is all supposition at this point. There's been no decision made on that proposal at this time.
Is there a possibility that we would be able to have seniors' final exams completed before the 17th? Like, I worry that kids are going to wind up graduating on Friday.
And not graduating two days later.
Right. Like, if they're kids who are under an A-, they're kids that are having a harder time anyway. I feel like this is making it harder for the kids that are already having a harder time.
I would need to defer to the high school administration. I don't know if, Julia, you want to speak to that tonight? Or the board can table this into your next meeting, which would be the traditional April meeting, and we can come back and have more information for you.
I have the same concern as well. My concern is going into this just exactly what's going to happen post-graduation.
There's no requirement for the board to act tonight? There's no, I mean, you?
I mean, except that it defeats the purpose of letting people know.
Well, it doesn't let anybody know sooner, but traditionally, we haven't let anybody know before the April meeting, so we were trying to take advantage of the latitude the legislation provided us. There's nothing that requires us to take advantage of that legislation, and we can go back and be able to answer your questions. I don't know that it's fair to ask Julia whether we can accomplish that without having time to look at the schedules and be able to put some time into it.
Yeah, I just, I do. I get concerned that the kids are walking on Friday and then three days later are finding out they failed the exam.
And then, if we know right now that, well, we don't know based on the legislation, I guess, but I guess I'm hesitant to purposely potentially schedule a graduation prior to the end of school.
We might not know for April. No, would we? Would they have a vote by then?
It is not unheard of for a student who walks across that stage in June on any given year to have incompletes that they complete over the summer and receive their diploma. It would not be creating a new situation. The only new part might be the students who still has to come in and take the exam, but we have had students who have walked and still had extending obligations or incompletes that they needed to complete over the summer.
But we haven't set it up so that that is likely for a number of kids, and this feels a little bit like that can happen.
It's not unusual for high schools to graduate before the last day of school. In private schools, it happens all the time.
All the time, okay.
It has happened in public schools in Connecticut. It's just this legislation allows it to happen at greater scale. We can certainly report back to you at your next meeting. The board is under no obligation to act tonight.
Yeah, and I think this also kind of gives the community an opportunity to hear it as well, maybe over the next four to five weeks, to maybe give us some feedback. I think it's important that we hear from some of these senior families.
Yep.
Like, if there's a way to have all the exams done before the 17th, I think it's a great idea. But I'm just thinking of that kid who's maybe got a B- or C+, where now that is the only child coming into the high school and is like, yep, I don't have an A-, so I have to take this test, and it could just bring more anxiety and whatnot to children that are already experiencing problems.
I don't think, and I'll just ask you to chime in. I don't think it is a common set of circumstances where there is a student whose whole graduation is riding on one or two exams. So I, right, and again, it might have been more my pessimistic personality in the way I answered the question. This is not going to happen at scale. There's rarely going to be, it's not going to be tens or, Julia, do you off the top of your head, can you speak to how often we find ourselves in that setting, situation, rather?
It's rare. It's rare because the final exam is a significant percentage, but a small percentage of the overall final grade. And so there are occurrences where a senior might not show up for a final exam but get their diploma because they passed the course with a grade that they found to be acceptable. I would add to that, we do offer them the chance to come in and take the exam to bolster the grade if they would like to, but not every single student takes advantage of that. So that happens every year regardless of, you know, when graduation is.
We're working with students, with their school counselors, with their teachers, with the administration, so that students do not end up in that high-stakes situation. So while that may be the plot of a teen movie, it does not occur frequently in our school that a student has to get an 87 or won't graduate, right? It just doesn't often come down to that hair splitting. But again, no obligation for the board to act tonight. We can come back at your next meeting with this topic.
Am I getting a sense that people would like to pause?
I'd like to wait.
Yes. I'm conflicted, but I understand why we need, I hate not giving families an answer. That's my only, that's like, I know it's just hard for families to navigate this, but if we know, I guess it's just hard because now we're going to go another five weeks, these families are going to have to hold on making flights and hotels, and that's how it always is, but.
If there are few students, is there a way of identifying those rare individuals who are in jeopardy that we could arrange for them to take their final exam before they walk?
That's probably a smaller lift than making sure the entire exam week concludes before the 17th.
So we can accelerate for the five kids if that's needed, so that we have it both ways, so that we won't put kids in a position that they're going to have to do that after graduation. So we can eliminate that if the teachers are willing to give an exam to some students early, or if the student chooses to do that. I mean, a student might say, I'd like to have those extra three days after graduation, I'll take it that way. So as long as we give students the choice and optimize their opportunity, it seems to me that we take the pressure off.
And we already have.
And we solve the problem of scheduling.
And to your point, we already have a list of students who are at risk and start tracking that early in the school year, because we do want to make sure that we hit the mark for graduation, so.
So what I'm hearing is a suggestion of a motion that says we would set the graduation date with the board's expectation that while some students may be required to take an exam post-graduation date, no student will have to take an exam post-graduation date on which their graduation could hinge. And again, there's no obligation to act tonight, but that's the conversation that I'm hearing.
The other possibility is we don't wait a month till our next regular meeting, is we wait till our workshop meeting. So it would be a two-week.
We can have this back to you at your workshop meeting.
And we can vote at the workshop meeting?
Yeah.
We can vote at the workshop meeting.
It's a regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We don't, right, we typically do most of our voting business in this meeting, but it is perfectly okay to identify an item.
I am fine with that, and I would urge families to be vocal, you know, to let us know. You know, come to us and let us know if you have a preference for one way or the other. This is, you know.
With that, so a reasonable compromise?
We probably won't.
No, I don't think we're going to know the legislature.
We probably won't have an answer on school days, but we will be able to more fully respond to the questions and concerns that you raised here tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You might as well hang out, Julia.
Okay. I'm going to hang out. Oh, yes, right. You're up next.
I'll be back for 9.5, too.
Right. That's right. If you'd like to sit instead, you should feel free. 9.3, receive for possible, I'm sorry, I can't even speak. Receive for possible action, modification of community service hours required for graduation in 2022.
So I'll just set this up a little bit before sharing it with Ms. Chaff, but Policy 6310, which is graduation requirement, identifies a requirement that each student complete 30 hours of community service in order to be able to graduate. This year, we have continued to have, students have continued to face challenges finding opportunities in the community as community service organizations, lots of places, we're restricting people who could be onsite. So we have a recommendation from the high school administration for a modification to that graduation requirement.
So we took, this was from Kevin Buno, who's the assistant principal for the 12th grade, and Tammy Lozot, who is the director of school counseling. They did an internal audit of where the seniors were with their graduation hours. There's 269 seniors in the senior class. As of, I want to say, the second week of the third quarter, 70 of them have completed their 30-hour credit requirement, which is approximately 1/4, maybe a little above. And so they were concerned. We're usually much further along in the process of community service hours at this point of the senior year. In talking with Mr. Buno, he and I have figured out a couple of ways to offer some additional community service opportunities for students to fulfill, not only in the community, but also within the school itself, expanding the peer tutoring opportunities, maybe setting up a homework help for, you know, mentoring for younger students. So a couple of ideas that we have. In recognition of the difficulty of the last 18 months in finding community placements to do service hours, we're asking for this year only to reduce it to 10 hours of required community service. We think that's doable for all of the students to complete before graduation with the additional opportunities that we're going to offer them. It would be 1/3 of what they typically do. And then conversely, we would like to have a special recognition for the students who, the 70 students who have gone above and beyond under very difficult circumstances to get their 30 hours of community service done in spite of the pandemic. So that is what the request is, is for one year to change the requirement from 30 to 10 hours, and then next year, we're hoping that we can go back to the 30-hour requirement.
That is a board policy. It would require a motion and board action to amend that policy for us to move forward with that expectation for this year's graduating seniors.
Okay. Any questions on that?
No, I mean, I appreciate you sharing that. You're trying to plan a concession or something to appreciate those kids, because that's where my head goes, right, to those 70 who have probably put in a lot of stress, anxiety themselves. themselves trying to get those hours in, and they've done it, and, yeah.
And some have done more than 30 hours as well. So, yeah, it seemed important for us to recognize them for doing that.
In the last couple of years, obviously, things have been interrupted, but how have we been, how have those students dealt with this, with this requirement? Obviously, that was off the table, but were they still, were there any opportunities for community service hours that we were trying to encourage them for the last couple of years?
There have been. There's many that haven't been available, but there were new ones that came, did become available. One of the students who got, there were three principal awards given out last year. One of the seniors who got a principal award last year had, I think he had done something like 170 hours of community service, delivering groceries and food to the elderly who couldn't get out to the grocery stores and, you know. So there have been some incredible feats that our young people have done during the pandemic, and I think that that's laudable and that we should recognize that. So is there a motion then to modify community service hours required for graduation for those graduating in 2022 from 30 to 10?
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye. Any against, abstentions?
Thank you very much.
No, okay. Wonderful. Thank you. All right. 9.4 is to receive two policies from the policy committee.
Okay, so in our packet, you guys have seen a couple of changes or additions, really, to two of our policies, and this is in response to Public Act 21-46, which is an act concerning social equity and the health and safety of our children. So what we are proposing, this is for read-only, not for action tonight, is we are adding two mental health wellness days for every student. So it would be limited to two per year. They cannot be used consecutively, but they can be used for any purpose whatsoever. So if someone is feeling like their kid needs to just take a mental health break, it will not be counted against you as an absence. So you can see that we have added that language to our policies, which is policy number 5118 and 5122.
This is now statutory requirement in Connecticut. This change brings us into compliance with the law.
And it's just the addition of that language and adding those two days, and then simply the dates are changing, and that is about it. So pretty limited changes.
All right. So each of us will review these thoroughly and then be prepared to act on them. Excellent. Thank you. All right. Up to 9.5 on the agenda, which is to receive a textbook recommendation calculus for the AP course. Ms. Chaff back again?
This is the recommended AP calculus text for Calculus AB and BC.
All right. Bye. So for the past 15 years, the three calculus teachers this year are Mr. Johnson, Mr. Shea, and Mr. Mildrum. And the three of them got together and did an assessment of the textbook situation for the calculus classes. And Mr. Shea provided some background information that for the past 15 years, they've been using two different textbooks. One textbook for Calculus AB, BC, which are two separate calculus courses, and then a separate textbook for Calculus Level 1. What they did is they came together and looked at the more current textbook options. The college board does ask us to update our textbooks for the AP courses specifically every 10 years, so they were due for a textbook review for the AP courses, both AB and BC. And they brought Mr. Mildrum into the conversation as well, because they were hoping to find a textbook that would address all of the course content that goes from Calc AB to Calc BC, and also present the material and have resources available that would be applicable for the Level 1 class as well. And that is why they have settled on this particular book. In addition to having AP-specific questions with each of the chapters and topics that are presented, it also offers, at the end of each chapter, it offers alternate assessments and assignments, so that the teacher teaching Calculus Level 1, who wouldn't necessarily be as focused on AP-type questions, might use them as a resource, obviously, but not be as single-mindedly focused on those, would have additional resources in the textbook that they could use. And I think that the calculus teachers, once the exams are done in May, they then look for alternate projects and assignments for the students to do from the time that they take the exam to the end of the school year in June.
All right. Any additional questions?
So it's a consolidation, which is nice, right? Consolidating AP and Level 1. And we'd have to revisit this anyways.
I would just note that the monies for this purchase are in this year's budget. We had planned for this renewal, so the monies are in the budget currently to make the purchase. And that textbook will be available for the next month between this meeting and the meeting where we ask you for your approval in the library at Lathrop House, should any board member or community member wish to come in and review the text.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chaff. All right.
Does a hummingbird have to do with calculus?
Yes, I don't.
I guess if I read it on that.
You would.
You would. Okay. Reports of committees. 10.1, does the policy committee have anything to report in addition to the two policies we received tonight?
We had a lovely fruitful conversation a couple of weeks ago, so while I don't have anything else to report tonight, you will see some new things coming in our future meetings, so stay tuned.
The operations committee, Mr. Delventer, anything to add?
Dr. Bellistraci, you did a great job kind of recapping the finances. I will say that some of the, some items that were touched upon that I think are worth sharing is that the state and federal meal reimbursement at 100% is ceasing June 30th. So we do have many eligible families who qualify for free or reduced lunch, and we want to make sure that they're actively participating in that program and applying as soon as possible. Good news on the, on the increase in fuel charges, we are locked in through June of 2023, which is great for both our heating oil and our fuel for our buses. And Cliff gave us a very thorough facilities project update, everything is going in the right direction.
Thank you. Excellent. Curriculum instruction and assessment committee, Dr. Hirsch, anything?
We're trying to get a meeting on the Mastery Learning Project between now and first week or two of April.
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. Liaisons to town committees, any reports from any town committees?
Nothing new from land acquisition.
No? Any others? All right. And liaison to Learn Board of Directors?
We had a meeting on Thursday, and in that meeting, we had a superintendent's perspective from Mariana Reyes, who is the principal of one of the regional multicultural magnet schools. And her update was awesome. These superintendent reports are so interesting to hear what is going on in other districts and how many overlaps we have. I know it was a Wednesday.
The one you missed.
I mean, I do get to hear you a lot. So anyway, these are great. They're really fun. It's great to see how focused on so many similar mental health and cultural initiatives the districts are focused on. It's really interesting. Other things for Learn, they are lobbying for an 8% increase in magnet school funding, so they're hoping, again, to try to cost our district less money overall, which would be fabulous. So any support that we can add to, to that kind of legislation, you can let me know, and I can give you kind of the specific numbers that we need to, the specific bills that we can actually request. Let's see, they're having a hard time with staffing, so if anybody wants to go and work for a lovely group of people, they are looking for staff in pretty much every faculty, like anything you can think of, they need help with. They're having a hard time keeping staff up there. They dropped the mask mandate, and much like here, they still have a percentage of students wearing masks, while the vast majority have elected to go mask-free. And that's about it. They're rebranding, which got put on hold for the last year and a half, so Learn is going to be rebranding to try to capture what Learn really represents and on the multicultural, multi-diverse learning possibilities that the magnet schools offer. And that's about it. Next meeting will be in a month.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right. We are coming towards the end of the agenda. We are now up to public questions. If anyone in the public has a question for the board, we certainly invite you to come up to the podium. Please limit to four minutes. Is there anyone who wants to come up? Just, we ask that you state your name and your address so that it can be recorded for the minutes.
Hello, I'm Matthew Gornary. I'm from Clinton. I'm an educator in Guilford Public Schools. At our last meeting on February 14th, I spoke in favor of maintaining Columbus Day by itself on next year's school calendar and having Indigenous Peoples' Day celebrated on the Friday after Thanksgiving, which would provide no added cost to the district. I believe this solution will elevate Guilford Public Schools as it builds bridges to all members of its communities. I can't recall a district yet who has made that change on the school calendar and then has separated it to two different days. And I believe that it would have a positive impact if the board, Dr. Friedman, and Guilford Public Schools makes that change. I'm going to read some names to you before I ask you a question. Antonio Bagnetto, James Caruso, Loretto Camitz, Rocco Geraci, Joseph Maceca, Antonio Marchesi, Pietro Monastirio, Emanuele Polizzi, Frank Romero, Antonio Scafidi, Charles Trino. Do any of these names mean anything to you? Okay. Let me remind you of today's date, March 14th. Does March 14th mean anything to you? I'm not getting any nods of yes. Okay. I'm not talking about Pi Day. It's not, I'm not referring to 3.14 Day in math. No. March 14th, 1891, is when 11 Italian-Americans were lynched in New Orleans by an angry mob sent out by public officials. Did you know that? No one is nodding yes. Did anyone here today know that? A few people did. A year later, the first Columbus Day was celebrated. Yes, the first celebration, the first proclamation of Columbus Day by Benjamin Harrison was in response to the largest lynching in history. So we're committed to diversity. There's not just one European story. If we're devoted to social justice, there are many groups who have been affected by I gave you the names of fruit peddler, a dock worker, a tinsmith, a fruit importer, a fruit peddler, a cobbler, a street vendor, a politician, a fruit peddler, a plantation laborer. These were the Italians from Sicily and Southern Italy that escaped horrid economic and social conditions in Southern Italy to come to live a better life. Now, most people think of the immigrants coming to New York, but there was a labor shortage in the South, in places like New Orleans. And these were the immigrants that faced inequitable wage practices, discrimination. Yes, you heard it tonight, lynching. Now, I need about an hour or more to take you through the Italian-American immigration experience of the 19th and 20th century. What I and many other Italian-Americans across this country are seeing is a new wave of anti-Italianism. And part of that story has to do with being Catholic, being Italian, and being patriotic I ask you to spend more time learning about this issue. But until then, I'm asking you to change the 2022, 2023 calendar. Every Italian I've spoken to, to any of the major organizations, any American that I've spoken to, they say, you know, as you go through this history, we didn't know. And it's time that as we teach diverse perspectives in history, we understand we can't lump the Italian-American experience, the Irish-American experience, all of the European experience as one thing. We have to look at the diversity within those European experiences, and at the same time, we have to honor our Native American friends. But we don't have to do one by taking away from another.
Thank you.
So I hope that we could continue this conversation positively.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address a question to the Board of Education?
Bill Misono, Jefferson Drive. I'd like to follow up on the Columbus issue a little bit. It just seems to me that it'd be so simple to have Columbus Day, and if you want to honor Native Americans, give them a day. I hear these things, and it just seems so simple to me. Why would that be a difficult thing to do? I think they deserve a day. I think Italian-Americans deserve a day. Columbus certainly deserves a day. There is a group that I look to when I question something. I looked for a Mensa group, couldn't find one, so I went to the next best thing. I went to Abar. And it's an interesting site. I found it right on the Guilford Public Schools website. I checked it a little bit to see what their opinion was concerning Columbus Day. Wasn't hard to find. And I really questioned after examining their site, never did it before, whether or not anybody here has really taken a look at the Abar website. It's quite disturbing. I printed out a little bit for you, and I'll give, ask you to look at page two in particular. It will give you their opinion on Columbus Day. I would expect probably by the end of the week, after you look at this, because I know you're all good, reasonable people, that Abar will no longer have a link to the Guilford Okay, second, I'm sorry, Mr. Petra isn't here. I wish to address him.
You can address the board, not individual board members, please.
I'll address the board. Yeah, I've addressed Mr. Freeman. He was actually very, gave me a sympathetic ear. Following the election, there was an article in Guilford Courier. In it, Mr. Petra.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask you to not talk about an individual board.
It's not about the election. No, 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 no.
You are naming an individual board member. If you would like to address Guilford Public Schools issues with the board tonight, you are welcome to do so.
Okay. I don't know how to put this. I won't use the name. How about this?
Is it a Guilford Public School issue?
In the article. Ms. Bellistraci, I was defamed in the paper by a sitting board member.
Okay, that is not an issue to bring to this.
Where do I bring it exactly? I'm trying.
You can email me directly.
I don't want to argue with you.
You can email me directly. This is a moment, this is a moment to address the Board of Education on Guilford Public Schools.
Education on Guilford Public Schools issues.
Why are you so protective of him?
I'm not being protective of him. I'm following the rules of Board of Education meetings, and I'm telling you, this is a time to address Guilford Public Schools issues.
It's part of the public school.
If you have an issue with a board member.
Do you know how this impacted my family?
Please, please email me directly on this issue. This is not a Guilford Public Schools issue. Do you have other things that are Guilford Public Schools issues that you would like to address at this moment? Otherwise, I'm going to ask you to conclude your comments.
All right. If I email you with a complaint, would you please explain the procedure that would happen?
I don't know until you've emailed me. I will, I will contact you after you email me.
And you will get right back to me.
I will contact you.
Okay, I can't wait for that.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you. Are there any other people who, in the public, who would like to address the board on Guilford Public Schools issues?
Evening. My name is Tim Chamberlain. I'm from Dome Ave. here in Guilford. Recently, you guys met with Dr. Seiler, and for the second time, he mentioned Moby Dick and being able to replace Moby Dick with maybe a more diverse example of a whaling community, as though whaling were the issue that was being discussed in Moby Dick, and that was the reason we read it. I believe we, well, first off, I don't think that's in any high school curriculum. I happened to read it in high school as a, after the AP test was done. But regardless, the idea that you could replace one book with another because it's the same general topic, even though it misses most of why anybody would bother to read it, is startling to me. Some of us were very concerned that in an effort to promote diversity, some of the academic rigor would be done away with. Tonight, my older daughter was helping the younger one with her homework. And for not the first time this year, my younger daughter was reading a picture book in Language Arts class. I can understand that if she were in kindergarten or maybe first grade. Second grade, that's probably getting along in the tooth. My daughter's in middle school, fifth grade, and they're doing picture books as part of their lesson and getting homework assignments on picture books. I think that you might want to consider that a downgrade in your curriculum, and you might want to look at that as something you want to backtrack on. If, one other thing that has been on my mind recently, and I've brought it up, is there have been several attacks on conservative students in your schools, mine included. Physical attacks and verbal attacks. My students have been labeled part of the problem. When we divide a community and label some of us as part of a problem, bad things are sure to follow, and they have. Attacks in your schools are, are a huge problem that have yet to be addressed in a systematic way. Each individual case has been, you could say, dealt with, but nobody's looked at it as there's a group of students being assaulted. I asked if it was known how many times my kids alone, because I know you can't talk about other people's kids to me, my kids alone had been attacked in schools this year. And I didn't get an answer on that. And that's upsetting to me. Just this week, I was made aware that people think that I apparently am a safety problem, a concern to the, to the teachers at your schools. That kind of rhetoric going out over Guilford Public Schools email, that members of the community that have not made any threats are a safety concern to your school, is the kind of thing that puts my students in danger.
I'm very, I'm a little bit concerned about what you're saying. I know of no communication that is identifying any individual.
Not as an individual.
And I'm afraid that you're hearing, the hearing public is going to misunderstand what's being said here. If there are students in any way that are being attacked, that should be brought to the attention first of the classroom teacher and then to the, the building administrator, the principal.
And I assure you, it has been.
Okay, that is, that is good.
And it has been brought to the attention of the superintendent as well.
Okay, then those are all the proper channels.
My concern is that as it's being dealt with, the bullying is of a group by a group. And it's being dealt with as though it's an individual of an individual. So each case is dealt with, but the overall problem remains. And I believe that, that when you make statements such as, if you're not part of our solution, you are part of the problem, it does not discourage such activity, it encourages it. And that is my, my issue that I bring to the board this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as a chairman, also Dome Avenue, I have a couple of questions. I'll keep it short and concise. What would you define as bullying?
So I just want to be very clear that we have policies that define bullying, but in general, this is a time when you can bring questions to us, and if we don't have the answers right away, we can get back to you.
All right.
Because as a board of education, we are required by law and by statute to hold discussions that we have put on the agenda ahead of time. You are free to ask your questions. We will record them. If there are things we can get back to you on, we will. But we can't hold a discussion about items that haven't already been put on the agenda. That's a law because if we got into a big discussion on any of these topics, the rest of the community is not aware that we're talking about them. So I absolutely welcome you to ask your questions. I just want to be clear that we may not be able to offer you answers right away. We can get back to you.
All right.
All right, excellent.
So is this a, something you're willing to kind of go over with me quickly?
Again, I, we have in our policy handbook, it is available on Guilford Public Schools website.
Oh, I agree. I've read the policy handbook.
Okay, so that's what I can tell you is.
Okay, so then what about cyberbullying?
I'm sorry?
I was cyberbullied, I was cyberbullied early in the year, and this person was in a position of power still after the incident. I know I'm not allowed to know the punishment which they are inflicted, but this person is a class officer, and they're still in that position of power after.
Okay, this is, this is, this is an individual incident, which must, that cannot be done without a board of education meeting?
But then I'll ask this. Who follows up on the reports of bullying? Are these reports?
Administrators.
Administrators.
Guilford Public Schools administration.
Are harassment reports, do they, reports go to the board at all?
All of these things are dealt with by the administration.
So the board of ed has no control over it?
It is not our, we are a policymaking body. We are not expected to or given the power by the state to deal with those issues. Those are issues that are in the hands of the administration.
What if, when it comes down to board of ed and students being attacked by things said by the board of ed?
I'm sorry, I.
If the board of ed puts out a statement, and then the students of that said statement or who fall under that said statement are attacked because of something said by the board of ed, what is that about that?
If, if any student in Guilford Public Schools has been attacked, they need to go to their teacher or the building administrator or the social worker or counselor in the school and identify that, and it will be dealt with by the administration.
So even if it's said by the board of ed, then it's the school's problem, is what I'm hearing from them?
There is nothing that has been said by the board of education that in any way encourages any student, staff, or person in this community, school community, to be harmed in any way.
I'd kind of like to disagree with that.
Okay, I'm not going to get into a discussion with you.
Okay.
You may, I'm simply telling you that if a student in this school has been attacked verbally or otherwise, there are the proper ways to deal with that. Go to your teacher, social worker, building administrator. The administration has policies and processes by which they must address these things.
So to sum up, the board of ed is the school's problem if the students are attacked because of something they've said.
Excuse me, that is inappropriate, and that is not true. If you have an issue, please go through the proper channel.
So it's the school's issue. Thank you.
Are there any other, other public that would like to address the board? All right. That being said, we are at the end of our meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is everyone. Thank you very much. Everyone, have a good evening.